As customary, we always have a word of prayer before we start our meetings. And I'll lead us in that prayer this time. Lord, we just thank you for this day that you've given us. We just thank you for the blessings of life. And Lord, we just pray for those that have lost loved ones in Hart County this week. We pray for the Dennis Bowers family. We pray for your comfort and peace within that family. And also, we pray for the Crocker family that has passed on. We just pray for peace and comfort there. Lord, we just thank you for the opportunity to be able to live in a country where we have freedoms, that we have a freedom of government, that people have a voice to speak, and we try to be a government who listens. And Lord, we just thank you for each one of our first responders, our EMS personnel, our law enforcement, and fire department, all these guys that put their lives on the line. We just pray for your protection upon them. Lord, we pray for our soldiers, the men and women that have fought and are continuing to fight for the freedoms of this country. We just pray, Lord, for you to be with us during this meeting and give us the wisdom that we need to make the right decisions for the people of Hart County. In thy name I pray, amen. Let's all stand for our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you all. We'll call the Tuesday, January 28, 2025 Hart County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. First of all, I'd like to welcome each one here tonight, whether you're watching on HTC Channel 3, or Hart County Board of Commissioners YouTube channel, or whether you're here in person. We welcome all of you. First on the agenda is to approve the agenda. We have anything we need to add?
I have a couple additions. If you don't mind, under Old Business H, Samby White, No Through Truck, third and final reading, I left that off somehow. And then I got an email this afternoon late on a renewal of insurance, health insurance. Need to add that to that. We need to get them answered by Friday. Add it under 13C. And under Executive Session, add real estate to it.
All right, can we get a motion to approve the agenda of those amendments?
Second.
We got a motion by Commissioner Teasley, a second by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's a five oh vote. All right, next is to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. Is any additions or corrections that need to be made? If not, can we get a motion to approve as printed?
Motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion by Commissioner Bennett, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. That's a five oh vote. All right, remarks by invited guests, committee of authorities? We have none. Reports by constitutional officers and department heads? Okay. County administrators' report?
Oh, I don't have a report.
Okay. Chairman's report, I would like to say that keep the Bowers family in your prayers. His daughter works for our EMS, and she does a good job. She's dedicated to Hart County and all, and we appreciate the job she does, but keep her in your prayers at this time. That's all I have. Commissioner Bennett, District 1?
Everything's running pretty smoothly in District 1. I don't have a lot of complaints, but I'd like to echo you on the Bowers family and the Crocker family as well. Everyone, keep them in their prayers. And I have one more thing I'd like to add here. In our last meeting, we was talking about transfer station, and I guess I put my foot in my mouth and used the Hart County Courthouse as an example when we were discussing ours. So I would like to apologize to the Hart County Courthouse, because if you remember, before I said that, I said our county works like a well greased wheel, and it does. I'll take a minute here. Our judges and clerks of courts and et cetera and so forth, and even the employees there, they go above and beyond 5:00 o'clock in the afternoon. I know they have certain warrants, TPOs, this type of stuff, so they get called in a lot. And I just, it was a bad example. So if I offended anyone at Hart County Courthouse, I deeply apologize. And that's all I have. Mr. Chairman?
All right, District 2, Commissioner Teasley?
I've done some work orders, like on some potholes, had a few calls about animals. Appreciate Corey Payne going out there and being on top of that, appreciate the job that he does. And that's all I got.
District 4, Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, I just asked for everyone to keep the farmers affected by the H1N1 virus that outbreak a couple weeks ago in your prayers. Especially, you know, the ones that were infected with the disease. Of course, their world's been turned upside down, but also those that are in the warm zone, they're suffering the effects as well. You know, some of them who were looking to get back birds are having to wait due to quarantine. Some are had to, you know, shift up different things as far as their operation, and this takes a toll on these farmers. You know, this is their livelihood, this is how they put food on the table. And for us as a county, it's the number one industry and number one economic driver that we have, and so this is something very serious, and I just ask for everyone to keep those people in your thoughts and prayers, hopefully that we don't have any more positive cases come about, and we can get through this. I do think this is the first time that a commercial flock has been infected in Georgia. I know it's the first time here in Hart County, but it's something that has been time and time again, been urged and been practiced and been planned for, and I just can't say enough for Department Agriculture, especially for Georgia Department Agriculture, veterinarians, these integrators who have billions of dollars at stake. They've just, you know, they didn't blink an eye. They came in here, did what they need to do, take control of the situation, and make sure this, you know, this virus didn't get out of hand. Also want to say, thank you, Terrell. I know we have a very minimal input in this because this is way over our head, but nonetheless, emergency services plays a vital role, and as always, he steps up and handles those situations with care. But that's all I got.
Mr. Chairman? All right, we'll move on to District 5, Commissioner Dorsey.
I just want to echo those, send out their thoughts and prayers to the Crocker and Bowers families. Anytime you lose a loved one, it's a difficult time. We'll thank those who've reached out, checked on me, I'm sick, getting back in the swing of things. And we're going to talk more about solid waste tonight, but we'll get to that. I want almost to have a work session in the next week or so to start looking at that. I spent a lot of time out there in the last few weeks. We'll get into that, but I guess we'll just have a work session to talk about some things that some of us have talked about earlier today. That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you all for your comments. We'll move on to Old Business Fire Department request to purchase a used fire engine?
Yes, I was supposed to have some agendas the last meet when you approved the other truck. I included the pictures in there of the ride up to the fire department and the pictures of the vehicle. Now let the fire department take over.
The reason for we're looking at this particular truck, it's replacing trucks called grass truck. Now, the definition of grass truck versus what we have, it's actually a tanker. It doesn't have a dump chute, has a very small tank on it. It's an 89 model. Tank's leaking, tank's leaking pretty bad, and actually trying to look into weld, re-weld and repair this tank is just too thin. This truck will take the place of it, but will also serve a purpose as a service truck. In ISO's eyes, they like to send service trucks in the departments, plus it's dual engine sitting on the south end of the counter. The new tanker we purchased, we've already got it in Station 6, it's already in service. Got to put this station at 4,500 gallons coming out the door. So that's, if 500 gallons a minute, you're looking at somewhere around nine minutes of water sitting there already with that one apartment. And on most structure fires, we're pushing that for every minute. So that's a lot of water that we dump real quick.
Captains are all good with it?
Yes, sir.
Yep, okay.
Is this one, Ed went and looked there?
Yes, sir. Yeah, Ed looked on that.
I'm going to make a motion, we'll go ahead and allow the fire department, this come out of your splash phones, Terrell? Okay. And this is the one that the Grove Community is, so it's a local truck practically, so yeah, fire department.
That's 27,500. 27,500?
Yeah.
I'll give you a second, Mr. Chairman.
All right, you got a motion, second. Any discussion?
Quick question, two questions. So we're taking this truck, putting it in service, and took one out last, the last. When we putting insurance, taking insurance off the old ones?
Yes, sir. Yeah, the insurance come off. Do we have two trucks?
We're not driving, we don't need to have insurance on them.
Do we have two trucks now that we can sail?
The bodies are forestry's, the trucks are ours.
Yeah, the tanks should be forestry's.
It was just a question. Because I know we replace it.
Do they go back to state surplus or whatever?
Yeah, state info.
That was state, the bulk of the state. When we're going to be ready for ISO, we're talking about this last time, maybe get a straight call answer. In regards to ISO, the way ISO works is, we need more tanks, we need more water supply at south end of the counter. And can I cross that?
What do we need?
Probably three more tankers, at least 2,500 gallons of water. And trying to find those, that was a very good price we found on that. Most of the tanks I'm finding are 200, 400,000 dollar trucks. And we just don't have that kind of money. Been trying to find trucks. Forestry builds a tank, a 2,500 gallon tank, that runs between 62,000 and 65,000. It's a six month wait on getting those tanks, finding a truck to put under it, brand new truck to put under it, anywhere from 125,000 to 150,000, a brand new truck. I'll be trying to find trucks huge, that's a needle in a haystack. Automatic with the right setup on the truck, it just, they either have half a million miles on them, or they've got 100,000 miles and they still want nearly 100,000. That's just not feasible. It's not worth it.
I asked this last time about the, if you answered then, I forgot, I apologize, but the water being ran, I mean, is these lines that are going in the ground now, are they going to help with ISO?
Yes, sir. Especially stuff going through the recast and the makeage.
Is it by mile? I mean, how do they determine, as far as, I know it's a point base, you know? You get X amount of points for the water and the water availability. So when they run, let's just say 500 feet of water with hydrants, I mean, is there a breakdown of, you know, what distance and how many points we get?
The way it formulates is how much water you can flow through the line. We had discussions on this, I saw the drawings on it, we actually made some changes on it to get a better flow. What they look at is flow rate, can we see ISO coming through that pipe? And generally, they like to see 1,000 gallons a minute or better. A basic hydrant, to be qualified as a fire item, 500 gallons a minute. That's as basic as you can get. For firefighting purposes, that's kind of touching gap, because you can actually start pulling more than the system can give you, and you can actually start collapsing the system. So we really want to see 1,000 gallons a minute, but that's what they base it on. When we do our hydro test, and it shows 1,000 gallons a minute or better.
Appreciate it.
Okay, no problem.
All right, we got a motion, second. Any other discussion questions? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's a five oh vote.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Next on the agenda, fire department request to get biz for a single vehicle building beside of the fire administration office.
Yes, sir. You know, we went to an engine style truck for the full time. We were in that small squad. It had a lot of miles on it, and we moved up to this truck. The other truck was overweight. This truck gives us the opportunity to have all of our equipment on it, and it's not overweight. And as far as ISO, we're considered an engine showing up at the scene now. So that's helping us on ISO as far as time getting there. We have been having to carry this truck, because we don't have a place to keep it close to town. We've been having to carry it back and forth to Byersville, the old station, to store it, because we don't have a place down here to put it. Over the last few days of this cold weather, because we had to leave it sitting outside, in the daytime while we're using it during the shift, the air lines and brake lines froze up. Because it's sitting outside and below freezing. And they want us to have it inside. We're supposed to have it inside in a, with a heater where it's controlled, where it can stay warm, where to start and won't freeze up.
You looking at a metal insulated?
We're looking at a metal insulated, yes, sir. We've checked with, we have made some phone calls, checked with three different vendors, one national vendor and two local vendors, one out of Elbert County, one out of Hart County. They're running around, they're all about the same, just a few thousand dollars difference between 16,000 and 18,000. And we would have to put a, we'd have to put a heating system in it and some lights. It'd have a roll up, it'd be a 20 by 40, with a 12 foot door, and then a side entrance door, where we can lock it from the inside to roll up door.
Is that 12 foot tall?
Yeah, 12 foot tall. Because we're not going to put a system to raise the door up and down, we're just going to raise that up and down by, you know, by hand. But we'll need a way to get in to, you know, where it'd be locked from the inside. We just got to get with Terrell, if y'all approve it, we got to get with Terrell, see where we're going to be able to put it over there. Maybe need to do a little, you know, some stuff around the edge of the building, some cosmetic stuff, you know?
The ground's not very level.
Only one side is fairly level, I think, and we could probably work it out.
I was saying, you may have to build a pad to put it on.
Yeah, we got a little concern about the asphalt, if it's going to hold up for that, but we just need to get something, put this truck in where we can keep it there instead of having to run it up and down the road to Byersville, unless using fuel, run it up and down the road.
Are you looking at like a temporary solution here, and this building being temporarily be taken down?
Right, if we ever decide, if y'all, we ever decide to move from that location to another, we can take this building down and carry it.
Don't we own the adjacent lot over there as well, Terrell? To me, that right there might be the best place to put something like that.
So that might's.
It's not level.
Not level. There you go. I mean, if you just don't get a concrete pad.
Yeah, none of that ground level up there.
But I'll put it where it's at.
All right, all we're asking for is a motion to put this up for bid. Does anyone make a motion?
I'll give you a motion, put it out for bid.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bennett, have a second?
Give you a second.
Second by Commissioner Brown. Any other questions?
Yeah, I would like to see it, you know, specked out, what it's going to look like, and what else is going to have to go into other than just a building, and making sure we're looking at all options, because we're all talking about it not being level. So I mean, is that going to take a good bit of concrete and other things, or we just looking at?
Mini split is going to cost you $5,000, $6,000 to heat it well.
You know how much?
But while we're bidding that, we might as well, you know, look at the whole gamut of things, so that way we can look at all one packet.
It should be, I mean, heating and air and electrical.
Just need to heat.
But I mean, if you're going to go with a mini split, that's what we got.
You will. And you're going to spray foam it?
4,500, 4,500, put it in back here. Put this back.
Yeah, I suppose, there, I agree. And spray foam, it's not cheap, I think it's a dollar eighty cent a foot.
All right, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's a five oh vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board of assessors, advocate interviews. Is Ms. Gail Smith here? Okay. Mr. Matt Denton here, and Ms. Jennifer O'Neill. She's not here. Okay. All right. We'll go ahead and go with, she was notified, right?
Correct.
Ms. Gail Smith, since you're first on the list, if you don't mind, come up to the podium, and we would like to ask you a few questions of tax assessor board. Notice on your application that you had several years experience as a, working at tax assessor's office, and also with ACCG Tax Assessors Office?
Yes.
So if you would like to expand on that, and just tell us a little bit about yourself and those kind of things?
Well, I have just retired from, well, I say just, Tom Blas, it was in '21, from Athens Clark County Tax Assessor's Office. For 28 years there, and prior to that, it was in Sumter County. I served five years, served, I worked here five years, so I've got 30 plus years working in the tax assessor's office.
What brings you to Hart County?
Hart County.
Lake.
Lake, yes.
I didn't know if you had family already here, or if you just liked the place, or the people are nice to you?
It was an opportunity. I just moved here back in 2015, and commuted back and forth to Clark County, so. And then I remarried, Randy Smith, and moved to Royston.
Okay.
So I just saw that there was a vacancy on the board. I often have thought about the job openings that I've seen posted about the appraisers, and then I think, nah, I don't want to get in it full time.
Okay.
So retirement's better. So I felt like this was a way to be involved with the community and to use the knowledge I had.
Okay. Commissioner Bennett, you have any questions?
So you've been in tax assessor's office 33 years? Well, you all know about what happens there.
Yes, sir.
And you do live in, you live in Franklin Hart over there, you live in Hart, right? I knew it showed you lived in Royston. I don't have any more questions, Mr. Chairman.
I know you got all these certifications and stuff, but I'm sure there'll be some more training and stuff like that. Are you willing to attend any classes if you were to get this position?
Oh, yes, sir.
Commissioner Brown?
The ACCG, so did you work for ACCG?
Athens Clark County Government.
Okay. Yeah, I got it wrong, too.
That's why I didn't know if you worked for them and our ACCG.
Yeah. We get confused.
It's Athens Clark County Government.
And then what was your position that you held again at Athens Clark County? Was it Praiser?
And Praiser 2.
Okay, Praiser 2. Is that, that's the highest you got, was a Praiser 2? That's all I have.
Commissioner Dorsey?
So being the one that's been around the block the longest, you probably are well aware of Hart County's tax problems in the past.
Yes. But it's come a long way.
Yes, we have, and we've had some good people, and we've got a great staff now. A couple years ago, we were starting to head down that 09 path again, and our real estate sales ratio showed that, and we made some changes, and things seemed to be really clicking. Shane does a good job, and the current board of assessors works great together. We don't want to go back there.
Right.
We do not want to go back to what we've been through, and the thousands of dollars that have been spent because of temporary collection, digest. I have no problem, your experience speaks for itself, being an appraiser, too. I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of all the numerous issues from values to appraisers, appraising, board members appraising property, just one thing after another. And for those of you that don't know, Hart County Board of Assessors is one of two tax assessor boards that the governor authorized and then special investigation of back in So we've had our problems, we've had peer review boards, and... So we've, we've had our problems, we've had peer review boards and right now we're kind of a success story in the state and we want to keep it that way.
Right.
So.
I agree.
Do you have any questions for any of us?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. And I would like to say I appreciate all these efforts that do apply for these positions.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
And next we have Mr. Matt Denton, if you've come before. Can we just tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure, I have a county degree, a CPA. I've spent the last forty years in corporate America in finance. Started off as a mill controller at George Pacific Cedar Springs Paper Mill in Elway County, the fourth largest wood consuming mill in the United States. Worked my way up, Division Controller, VP of Finance for three divisions and a segment at GP. Went on to Smurfit Stone, which is largest packaging company in the world. And they were bought by West Rock. Went there, second half of my career, I was CFO of four different privately held companies, three of which were owned by private equity. Throughout my career, I've been responsible for all, all tax, including property tax, sales tax. And most recently, I've been on the Hart County, I've been Executive Chairman of the Hart County Republican Party and I've also been Director and Board Member of the Hart County Property Owners Association. So worked with Shane's group in that capacity.
But as far as any kind of tax appraiser role or anything like that, you've never had any kind of?
I've always been on the other side.
Right, yeah.
Like when I was in Earl County, we were the highest taxpayer in the county. We basically funded and supported the county. So we had a lot of interaction with the Tax Assessor's Office there. Throughout my career, I've been responsible for all taxes, including property taxes.
Okay. Commissioner Bennett, do you have?
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Matt, if you were to get this position or whatever, would you be willing to do whatever you got to do to go to the, train any classes?
Yeah, absolutely.
District four, Commissioner Brown?
I don't have anything. I mean, we've seen Mr. Denton's resume before, just impeccable resume.
It is.
And I do, I always appreciate you volunteering and being involved and you've, you've put in for several key positions and I do commend you for that.
No, I want to do whatever I can to help Hart County.
And I know you're very, very involved with, which is the rebranded now, the Hart County Property Owners, it's now the taxpayers as well as well as the Republican Party. So I appreciate you.
Sure.
Doing that, but I don't, other than that, I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Dorsey, District five?
Do you feel like your position and involvement as a Board Member on the Property Owners Association or Tax Payers Group now, do you feel like that could create a conflict of interest somewhat?
Um, yeah, I could see how that could. And if I was appointed to this, I'd probably have to resign from that Board because, you know, I, anything I do, I do a hundred percent. So it's tough to be an advocate for individual property owners and taxpayers, but simultaneously be on the Board who's responsible for that.
You have any questions for us?
No.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Denton.
Next on the agenda is Board Assessors vacant position appointment, which this one will expire in twelve thirty-one twenty-two-six. You've heard the two interviews and also you have the Ms. O'Neil's resume there. So need a motion for an appointment?
Mr. Chairman, I would respectfully request that we discuss this in executive session since we have personnel and then come back out and make a, a decision or announce a decision. We'll have to vote publicly, but I think there needs to be some discussion.
I agree.
I'll give you a second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey to discuss this in executive session before making an appointment. And we got a second by Commissioner Bennett.
Mm-hmm.
And all in favor? It's five oh vote. All right, so we'll be making that decision after we have the executive session. Bid award for tennis pickleball lights. You see where the Rec Advisory Board has not had a meeting, but they've kind of done a consensus with all the Board Members and they're all ready to go ahead with this bid of fifty-six.
Correct.
Was it fifty-nine thousand?
I'll make a motion, we go ahead and award the bid since it was only bid to west go lighting, so you get this going.
I'll give you a second. So we got a motion and a second, any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, it's five oh vote. We'll move on down to road striping list. I would just like to put in a formal motion, if the road hadn't been striped in the last seven years that we striped.
I'll give you a second.
Do we want to?
I don't agree with that.
Five years or, I mean, I, I don't, all we had here was three years.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, the seven years is the life expectancy of paint.
The problem we're going to have, some of these roads are not wide enough to be striped in places.
I think we just need to stick to the roads that do have the striping.
I've gotten out and I've ridden every road in District five in the last week and a half. I've got my list put together.
Well, you can add it.
But I'm just saying, you're going to run into situations, especially some of these old tar and gravel roads where they're going to be too narrow to stripe.
Most of them, we've striped all the roads that's been striped. The tar and gravel's never been striped, has it?
Yes, they have.
Do we have any recommendations?
Some of them have, I can see that, I've been on some of them.
Do we have a recommendation from the Road Superintendent who knows more than any of us?
He rode them back when we started all this and he made a list. I'll have to find that list. But he, I sent him out to ride them all and it also includes some rumble strips in places that, that are worn out and places that we don't have that we do have, although it was on his recommendations. I'll find that and it was a couple of pages of roads, it wasn't just a few, it was a good many.
Well, what I've run into here is I've got a couple of roads that's going to be on paving list next to paving that need, that just, that needs terribly needs striping right now. So if they're going to be, when it would be four years down the road, so I guess we could go ahead and stripe them because of the paving that.
Well, we have a paving bid out now for the first half of those roads. It'll be back in at the next meeting. And then the second half will go out after that meeting for the rest of the roads.
Now, I'm just saying, future roads that need striping now, I'm sure all the commissioners are looking at paving some of those.
But again, you'll have an up-to-date, what I'm saying is you'll have an up-to-date list of the roads that's fixing to be paved and they'll be paved, so you can.
So we're going to get a new list?
You'll get the list we've already bid out, you'll know exactly which road is going to be paved. And they'll be paved this summer, all of them.
Right.
So the list that you've got, Terrell, that we, that we have has like twenty twenty-three.
What I done, we went back and pulled all the pay, uh, striping bids from twenty seventeen or twenty fourteen up. This is the list of roads that was on all those striping bids. So that kind of gives you an idea of what year they were striped. That's all this list is for, is to give you an idea of the ages of striping.
I'll amend my motion to say in the last five years. And because, like I said, the average paint lasts seven years before we do our road engineering.
I'll amend my motion to the five years as well, my second.
Right. Any other discussion?
I'm planning on submitting my list. You get out and look at these at night, you can really see what you got.
I think going forward is, it'd be a really good idea for this Board to lean heavily on expert opinion, especially from our Road Superintendent. I mean, you, you just, we are politicians, we are not road professionals and we don't need to try to act like we are. So we need to rely on these department heads that, you know, are experts here and they see it more than any of us. That's what they do day in, day out. I would like to see that going forward, especially as we look at a long-term plan here, not just say, you know, grab and go, grab and go when the money's there. Let's, let's look at, okay, how many miles do we have? What type of roads do we have? You know, come up with a formula that way you're striping these roads, you know, on an annual basis, based off of data and input from the Road Superintendent versus, you know, when we do. Fortunately, we have the, the money left over and that's why we're trying to do as much as we're doing here and catch up. But, you know, hopefully we could, we could do this in bite-sized pieces and not run into a situation like Matt Oliver where, you know, that roads need to be striped for a while now and it's, it's a safety hazard, no doubt about it, so.
Just so the public know, we put five hundred thousand in the budget in Splash Five just for striping this year.
How many miles would that be throughout the county? You got any idea?
Prices on things change so much right now, Frank, I'd be scared to, scared to tell you.
A lot of that we got to do if it's two lines, four lines or whatever.
Most of these roads can get.
Why, the prices we got was eight dollars a foot per line.
I want, I want to go back and say something. You know, when you're elected as a Commissioner, there's a lot of things that comes into play. Roads is one of them. I'm not going to delegate my elected responsibilities to a hired hand. I'm going to get out and ride every road in my district like I do every four months. I'll take care of my roads. I don't need somebody to tell me. I can tell what needs to be striped, what doesn't need to be striped. I know there's a difference of opinion, but that's our responsibility as Board Members is to ensure that that hap, well, however it happens. If you want to do it, that's fine, but there's a lot of things that go on that we get calls about. And when you're out here, like I am in the emergency services as a volunteer fireman, there's nights out here, it's foggy, it's raining, you can't see, you don't know, trying to just find some of these places is tough, especially some of these little narrow roads up on the lake and just, it, it's tough. And while I'm on this, nine-one-one addresses, folks, everybody needs to have a reflective sign so we can find you. There's times we can't find people because you have these signs on the mailbox that the numbers are faded off on. It's very important that you have those so that we can find the reflective ones that you can get through the 4H office. But all new addresses now have those. But I feel strongly about our delegating, delegating my elected responsibilities and I'm not going to do that.
Okay, time for a vote? Marginalated motion.
You'll have my list tomorrow morning, Terrell. I'll email you my list.
All right.
And I'll, I'll have these ready for each next meeting where y'all can look at them right before we go out.
Okay. All right, any other discussion questions? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, it's five oh vote. All right, now we'll move on to transfer station hours of operation and scale. Commissioner Dorsey asked that to be put on the agenda and so I'll turn to Commissioner Dorsey at this time.
I talked to, talked about this at the last meeting. We got some serious problems out there and I feel like what we did at the last meeting was a knee-jerk reaction. Terrell pulled time cards, I pulled them, I went back two nights. So what's happening, just for everybody's information, you have convenience centers out in the community. Hickory Crossing, their convenience center is that transfer station. Your hours of operation, they close at seven o'clock on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, ten to two on Saturday and then three to six on Sunday. The Board at the last meeting, based on some things that's happened, voted to change some hours and I want to talk about that a little bit more. When we change hours, it affects everybody. There were people out there Saturday that were turned away because the gate was closed at one-thirty and people didn't know. That's fine, whatever the Board wants to do. But the issue that prompted that discussion was the Saturday before when traffic was backed up, all the way back to the dog channels. Waste Pro had three commercial trucks back to back to back trying to dump. The guys at the solid waste facility had no trailers to load anything in. All this trash was just piling up under the shelter. They couldn't push it, they couldn't do anything with it. You had a, a long line. And that day, it was two forty-four when the people got out of there and they had the gate closed around fifteen to two. That was an anomaly. That was right after Christmas. So we had other issues going on. Pulling the time cards and everybody, Terrell's give us some of these, you go back to November when they were closed at about five or 10 minutes to two, the staff, which is part-time help, they're getting off no later than nine minutes after two. That's when they're clocking out. So they're able to get everything done. This past Saturday, they shut the gate at one-thirty. It was two-twenty when they got out of there. Shutting the gate earlier is not making it better. Saturday was a situation where they had one trailer, there was trash everywhere and there's trash all over the ground out there. Our biggest issue right now is so many people are coming to Hart County to dump because we're cheap. Was out there yesterday, they had one trailer to load. There was three trucks with forty-yard containers. These commercial companies, all three of them slapped full, brought in and dumped. Where are you going to put the stuff? You don't have trailers, we can't get trailers. They did two hundred and I believe Greg said sixteen thou, two hundred and sixteen tons today, hundred and ninety-eight tons yesterday. When that transfer station was built, they would do thirty-five, forty tons a day, nothing like what it is today. If you go out there, the sides have been completely torn off of the building because there's so much stuff going through and they can't process it all the way through. We've been promised a third truck, which he gets occasionally. He didn't get it yesterday. That's why I'm asking that we have a work session and some of the things that I think need to happen. Number one, there needs to be a premium charge for these commercial trucks that are coming in here and dumping from all over the place. You need to be able to show proof that you're a Hart County resident to dump because you are subsidizing these other people's trash dumping operations and that's not right. That's why I want to have a, a work session and I've talked with Commissioner Brown a little bit and Commissioner Sayre some today earlier. We're in the process of adding a, another shelter to the team of about two-point-two million dollars is what the budget is. But we can add all the shelters we want, but if we can't get somebody to haul the trash off, where we going to put it? That's the issue, it's the, the pressing need. That's what's driving a lot of this issue right now is we can't get the trucks and trailers to get this stuff loaded up and get it moved out. It stockpiles there and that's what's caused it. And if we want to change the hours, that's fine, but I think you got to change it county-wide, not in one location, because this does affect everybody. Terrell was not clear on what we did. He said, yeah, Terrell and I talked about this afterwards. I said, well, you know, that's the Nancy Hart, not Hickory Crossing Communities Transfer Station, uh, Community Convenience Center, I'll get it right in a minute. So you're closing it early for those folks and everybody else, I mean, since they're going to take something, they got to go somewhere else. We just need to have standard uniform hours and after we take actions or whatever, then so be it what we do. I think we also need to stop commercial trucks from going out there and dumping on Saturday because that's taking away from our local taxpayers who work during the week and don't get a chance to get out there except on Saturdays. That's just my opinion and I've got pictures, I'd be happy to, I can email Terrell, he can show them and see what kind of mess it is, but it's an absolute disaster, looks like a war zone. And then we also have a big problem with dogs coming in out there. I mean, there's twenty-five, thirty dogs, all brown dogs. So the place was closed up Saturday, right through the gates they go.
Hopefully, hopefully we got the, some equipment to address that last week.
The dogs?
Yeah, hopefully we got some tran, we got a tranquilizer gun. As, we've tried to trap them for over a year.
I know, we've been working on it.
It's quicker, we got.
It's not, it's not a quick fix.
That's, that's, what we're going to try with the dogs is a tranquilizer gun.
Raising puppies after all around that equipment.
I mean, they're, they're smart, they won't go in a cage.
I know, they're well getting plenty to eat.
Junkyard dog. Junkyard.
I would like to say that, you know, our employees out there at the transfer station, I don't want them taking the blame. This is Commissioner's problem, just as. station, I don't want them taking the blame. This is Commissioner's problem just as much as, I mean, because we knew this growth was coming in and we should have had something already in place. We are building a new transfer station soon as we get the paperwork done. That's in effect. And not only will we have eventually two transfer stations out there, we're probably going to have to get these folks some more help. I mean, they're doing the best they can. They're, I mean, I appreciate the job that they're doing and my hat's off to them. Like I said, I just want the public to know, they're not out there goofing off and playing around. It's not their fault.
I want to make that clear. I did not imply that at all.
No, no, you did.
I didn't say you did.
I just want to make sure everybody understands that.
Well, I know.
I think they need to be braved on every once in a while. I mean, the job they're doing.
They do. I don't disagree.
You know, I go out there two days a week, Wednesday and Friday, and Greg Howell and Mike Powell, a whole bunch of guys, Joey and all of them out there are always working. There's no grass growing under their feet.
Those guys work hard out there. I do think, as Commissioner Sayer said, they, they need some more help. They need one hand out there that doesn't have to pick up trash and run the magnet. The flat tires are unreal that comes out of that place out there. It's ungodly. You got to look at it before you back in it for the screws and nails. That's from the drywall and the roofers in which they have every right to dumping there as well as anybody else. And the new building we're getting is because the old one's fallen down. I actually mentioned this two years ago. And I know we've had a lot on our plate and then everybody's dealt with COVID. God bless all of those that passed away from that. But the people out there do work hard. The building has fallen down. As Commissioner Dorsey said, I keep up with that transfer station. I'm there two to four times a week. They, they can't get the trucks in there to haul the stuff out. So if you can't, don't have anything to put it in, then it's going to pile up. I mean, it's unreal out there. As far as those lines, I've been going out there since that transfer station was built. Those lines on a Saturday, I've seen them all the way back to, to the highway out there on a Saturday. They just, they get that way sometime. One of our community people here, Harley Martin, sat out there and directed traffic on several Saturdays just to keep people from fighting. They actually was, it blows out there. I was there. They was ready to knock each other's teeth out because running in front of each other, just everybody's in a hurry and it takes a while. So maybe with the new facility and select Commissioner Dorsey said, if we can get some more people, maybe another two companies hauling trailers in there or whatever. And I'm fine with the work session as well because there's a problem and we're going to have to address it, whatever it takes.
Yep. All right. What's the date for the work session? Do you have a date, Commissioner Dorson?
I don't know when everybody's available. I mean, I'd like to do it before the next meeting. Like just announce some of the changes as soon as we can.
What's, I mean, what is the main thing that we do want to accomplish in the work session? And the reason why that I'm balking on this is we also have some ordinances and that's what we're elected to do, is to legislate, not manage. We have a administrator and we have department heads. I've said several times about the tipping fees, and I think we've had some very successful conversations about that of late. I think that may be one of our major issues there on this overflow is we're just the cheapest around and we're not charging a commercial rate. We're not charging an out of town rate. I'm wondering if we couldn't solve a lot of problems, if you could possibly get us a proposal next meeting of us increasing the tipping fee across the board and mainly having a big, I guess, focal point on commercial and out of town so that we can deter some of that extra coming in. And that may, that may have been one of the major players in this and we didn't have to change the hours. And right now, the hours, I felt like were too, I mean, okay, for instance, they said they got off at 2:20. Well, if we were to close at 2, they would have got off at 3 or after.
Yeah, I mean, they, they got to have, they got to have 15 or 20, whatever minutes downtime to close everything out.
We can leave the decision we made in place because it's only been two weeks.
I'm just saying, if the tipping fees were in place already.
Well, that, but what you want to do about the commercial traffic on Saturday is Commissioner Dorson said, do away with it. I'm all for it, cutting the commercial trucks off on Saturdays and let our locals get their stuff done.
I'm not a trash expert.
I'm not either. I'm not either.
Who's going to enforce that?
The tipping fees?
No.
You'll just put up a sign or run.
You just got to show your driver's license and the staff. I mean, you put a sign up outside.
Yeah, they'll get it after a week.
I mean, I think, I think this is one thing I think we can do though, and I think we really need to think about it. I don't want to get off topic, but these local businesses that are based here in Hart County, I think they have a right to do it.
Oh, agree with you.
It's, it's the folks who are coming from Athens Park County. They're coming from all around here. There was a local business that I know is in downtown Livonia. Every time I go out there, they're constantly dumping, constantly. They're coming all the way from Livonia down here to dump. And I said something to the guy yesterday. I said, you know you're bringing your trash to Hart County. Yeah, I know. It's cheap. That was, that's what I got.
Yeah, we, we are under, everybody around us, exactly how much. I don't know. I think.
Elbert County is 65.
Elbert County, $20, $20 a ton higher than we are, I think. 20, was 65 a ton?
We're 65.
We.
We're 60.
60. We're 60.
We're 60.
60.
Yeah, we're 27 on the yard per year.
Yeah, that's something we like to go up on tremendously.
I mean, that's the problem out there.
Yeah, I've, I've been discussing trying to go with a contractor to get it to work.
But I really feel like if we implement some of these things, I think it's going to relieve some of the congestion. It's going to make things flow better. It'll give us an opportunity to try to get some of the repairs done to that building. And, you know, I've, I've talked to Greg every day this week. I've been out there involving him in all the conversations. And I think they are proud to see that we're trying to do something.
Do you need that in a form of motion to bring us a proposed?
No.
Because we have to vote on the increase.
We have to vote on the increase. We have to vote on the hours change and.
Yeah, you have to vote on any change.
But you don't need a form of motion to bring it up for the next agenda?
No, I don't need that. I'll get it, I'll get it together and to get all.
I would like to have something that we could go ahead and vote on. That way we can put it in place.
Why can't we vote on it tonight?
No, no.
What you want to go with, 70?
We need to, we need to get some more rates and stuff like that.
All that I always wanted him to do is get it, exact rates, like here's your rate for out of town, here's your rate for out of town commercial, so on and so forth. And then, you know, Greg may have some other points that he may want to.
Y'all can say what are you going to do. If you want surrounding areas numbers to compare by, that's fine too.
That's what I was looking at. Is this what everybody else is doing?
I'd even look, you know, across the river too. I mean, I know we get some South Carolina.
There's private stuff out there too. Not just the government stuff.
Thank you, Terrell.
Thank you.
All right. You want to go Thursday night?
I've got.
That's a GMRC meeting too.
Yeah, Frankie's going to be presenting.
Let's just try to do it next Tuesday before everybody can. I don't know what everybody's got going on.
The fourth?
Yeah.
Okay. 5:30 to 6:00?
5:30.
5:30 is fine with me.
5:30.
It shouldn't last long.
All right.
You know, Jill, we can request that a work session and Michael said he'd go along with that. Does that matter?
No, we haven't.
No motion.
I don't think you don't need a motion for it. We just said it's going to be the 4th to 5:30.
5:30. All right.
Thanks for everybody's support in making this happen.
All right. Now we'll move on to.
SB White.
Yes, SB White, third reading of.
I make a motion, third and final reading of SB White Road for no through truck signs.
Second. Got a motion back from Mr. Bennett, second back from Mr. Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor? It's five oh vote. Now we'll move on to new business, except for the Carlotta Way and Nada Lane subdivision off Erdy Drive into county road system.
Yes, this subdivision was, came in 2000, 2001.
About that, about one.
And like I say, and the road during their initial construction was inspected by road superintendent up to the packing of the base. It had the initial course of asphalt on it and stayed that way until the houses, all 80% of the houses were built out. Had the final two inches of asphalt put on it and it's laid just a little over a year. So it meets the requirements, our subdivision ordinance to be brought into the county.
Has our road superintendent signed off on inspection for us now?
He hasn't been out since the last, you can do it, continue on his approval if you want to.
Okay.
Yeah, we need that. We need him to sign off on it.
I make a motion. We take this as a county road system with contingency that our road superintendent looks at the roads and sees that everything's good.
I'll give you a second on that one, as long as it's contingent.
Any other discussion?
Just need to reach out to G Doc and get DOT numbers for county road numbers.
Yeah. All right. All in favor? It's five oh vote. All right. Now we'll move on to Legacy Link Agreement, something we do every year.
Yeah, this is a usual quarterly addendum to the Legacy Link contract. What they do is update the numbers, the meals and everything every quarter. And then we make those adjustments and that's all this is. There's no difference in the, in dollar figures or anything else. It's just a meal number.
Make a motion. We approve.
Second. Got a motion back from Commissioner Dorsey, second back from Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor? It's five oh vote. And we'll move on to county health insurance.
Yeah, when I, I got this email this afternoon from Andrew, we're rocking our broker. He'd been negotiating back and forth with our insurance carrier and they've, he worked out for them to renew it for another year at the same rate.
Same premium?
Huh?
Same premium.
Same.
Did we get a reduction last year?
Huh?
We got a reduction last year.
We got 11% reduction last year.
Yeah.
And hold of the same premiums this coming year.
Yeah.
But you want to lock it in this week if we're good, so.
Make a motion. We approve.
Second. Got a motion back from Commissioner Dorsey, second back from Mr. Teasley. Any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor? It's five oh vote.
Just so you know, that's health, dental and vision. They're all with the same, with proper issue.
All right. Terrell's such a preferred risk.
Yeah.
That's because you're such a preferred risk.
Now we'll move on to 14 public comments. Is there anyone here that would like to address the board and speak on something concerning the county, not a commissioner or anything like that? So, ma'am, he raised his hand first back there, then you, you'll be able to speak after that, okay? If you would state your name and address.
This is also the time cards as well, for people that work at least three minutes over, not just on Saturdays. Shows how many days they've been here.
Okay.
There are a lot of, but I agree. I'm Jason. I do work at the transfer station. But I do think when discussions like this are had, maybe having someone from there to give the input. So I've got a list. The stuff I handed down through there is actually issues that are there, not just about time, about what to get out. So that this past Saturday at 1:35 is when I closed the gate. So I closed the gate later. From the time I closed the gate and got back on the tractor or something, it already went around the stop sign. That person was the one we had to wait until 2:20. Because that person was the one that did it.
That large truck or something?
No, just a standard pickup truck, trailer. Yeah, he had limbs, debris, trash, all mixed. So he had to go end up in the building. And as far as the, the commercial vehicles on Saturday, that's a rare thing. Most of that happens from when we have holidays, snow days that we just had, things like that. So that's rare. Most of the time that it's later is when the people are lined up and it's just individual customers.
How many, how many Waste Pro trucks did you have Saturday? I know there was one because I saw one when I was up there.
I think we had Hartwell in there. I think there was six total for the whole day.
I'm talking about, I ain't talking about the roll off containers. I'm talking about the actual compacting trash lanes.
That's what I'm telling you. Hartwell, they came in. So their trash trucks came in as well. I think Unlimited was in there and some Waste Pro.
Which we did have a nice day last week.
Right.
So that's.
Most of that comes.
Could be part of it.
Because our trash didn't even get picked up until Saturday where it normally gets picked up on Friday. So everybody was a day behind.
All right.
So I think having someone from there involved in the discussion to see what's really going on, I think that's the best option.
You saying next Tuesday evening? Is that what you're saying? You talking about next Tuesday evening?
Sure.
You more welcome to come?
You are welcome to be.
You, Greg, all them guys out there.
I'd love to.
I mean, why, why couldn't we?
Appreciate y'all considering that, for sure.
Why, why wouldn't we want to get input from you guys and then instead of us as a work session trying to figure out a wrong?
Because each of you could drive through and just see something that you see that day.
I ain't go, that's, I mean, I go out there when I got to, but I ain't there to see what y'all doing.
How long have you been out there just?
Almost a year.
Well, you saw it in the summertime on Saturdays where that traffic gets backed up past your gate.
Well, this past Saturday was the first Saturday that I've worked. I'm blending in with the other guys to help give them some relief and.
I've saw it many times. It gets backed up and there's people cleaning out the garages, working the yards and, you know, and Saturday's the only time they got to do it.
Right. And then they got till 7 during the week to do it. But I think the biggest problem on the Saturdays is where people come in last minute trying to get done. Oh, I'm going to drink my coffee, you know, in the mornings and get, finally get up and go.
Man, that's an assumption.
And everybody shows at one time. I mean, I don't know. That's, that's what it kind of looks like. From 8 to 10, it's dead. From 10 to 2, it's busy.
We'd appreciate you being here next Tuesday at 5:30 and we'll get some things.
If y'all have anything else that y'all want to pray or can give to Greg?
Okay.
I mean, that kind of stuff needs to come.
This is good. This is good. And like I said, and we'll, we'll go over in the work session.
And I do want to say this too. The convenience center part of the transfer station isn't closed until 2. We actually, the sign on the gate says scale is closed. It doesn't say convenience center is closed.
With the, with the gate shut, no people, normal people would stop and not come on in.
Well, I think people come in up that they know, hey, we can go on in there because it's just, you know, for the convenience center at that point.
But see, if somebody sees somebody do that, the next person that's got a trailer behind says, well, if you did, then I'm going to do it too.
I don't think that's accurate.
Somebody's going to do it.
Well, I mean, I think we have, if we put a different system into place, which is part of what's on that paper, you know, if we had a better system in general, it would be better.
Let's work on it next Tuesday.
Thank you for coming.
Appreciate you.
I pray in that stuff.
Thank you, Jason.
Anyone else for public comment? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Sandra Smith. I live right by your main discussion tonight, the 267 Zion CME Church Road, which is half mark in transportation. I want to start with saying that I agree with you guys. Those guys work. Their butts off.
They do.
I use the tra- convenience center regularly. We recycle everything we can get. Okay? And I agree with your ideas wholeheartedly about people from out of town should pay more because we don't have trash pickup because we're out of the city limits. We take our own trash in. But the purpose of my wanting to discuss today, I also want to acknowledge the board and Sheriff Carroll. These dogs have been a major nuisance in our area, not just from the transfer station. I have people that live around me that let dogs run constantly. My dogs are waking us up. My dog is waking me up at night because of all these dogs that are coming in our yard. But.
Your yard's fenced, right?
It's fenced. The only ones that have been going over the fence are the dogs from the transfer station.
The wild ones.
Yes.
They killed any more of your chickens?
They killed the seven last year. They killed two last week and then they came back another day last week and got another one. They really hit us hard with that cold weather.
Well, our county administrator said they've got something to put in the place for that.
They're taking care of it and I'm very, very pleased and satisfied and I want to acknowledge the board for their attention to it. The, the only other issue, like I said, is not just the transfer station, but I mean, I The, the only other issue, like I said, is not just the transfer station, but, I mean, I even looked it up. We have, I've had this problem, I've lived in Hartwell now since 2011. My husband's from Georgia, I'm not, but he brought me here, came here for a peaceful life, get away from the city, get away from the stresses. We stay out of everybody's business, you know, and all we ask is the same. And when these people in our neighborhood that are breeding puppies for milk, and then they leave and go move back to Athens, but they have a relative that lives in the neighborhood, two dogs that I've had in this, since I've lived in this state are rescued from those packs. Okay, this is a, like I said, it's been going on for 14 years. I spoke with Sheriff Carroll concerning the animal control officer. And I understand it's a nine-to-five position, Monday through Friday. And I'm having problems every night at 1:30 in the morning with dogs coming up and making my dog nuts. Okay? I, today, this dog was, there was a German Shepherd running loose. Last week, when I, or last week or the week before, before the chickens were killed, I had called about a nuisance dog, about a Beagle running loose on Monique Drive. Okay? The ordinance, I've looked it up, Hart County's ordinance, this is against the ordinance. Okay? Not only are they killing my chickens, they're keeping us awake all night, okay? I take the responsibility of fencing in my dog, other people should do the same. Yes, I may be a city, previous city girl, but my husband has the perspective of what it lives like to live in the country, so we have long discussions about it. And he agrees with me, these dogs are nuisances.
Do you know whose dogs are killed? Are these just stray dogs, or are they somebody's dogs?
No, they belong to people.
You know who's they are?
The people in the neighborhood, you know.
They can be declared vicious dogs through the magistrate court.
There's a Beagle that's running around, it hasn't been seen for about two weeks. But now there's a Shepherd that's running around, even today, 1:30 this afternoon, it was up next to my gate to get into my yard, because I got chickens and ducks, which live inside the fence. The chickens that were killed last week were roosting on my front porch. Now how violated would you feel if you had dogs coming on your front porch?
Your front yard's fenced in, too.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, they climb the fence. Those dogs from the transfer station climb the fence. Okay? I mean, it's traumatizing to know that these dogs are coming up, and I could step out to let my dog out because he's upsetting, maybe he needs to go to the bathroom, whatever, and I could get bit. Okay? Now, I'm very satisfied with the county's approach at this point, but what I am concerned about is not having an animal control other than 95, Monday through Friday.
I think he's worked some on the weekends, on some situations.
Okay. I mean, I know, Hart County Sheriff, I can't, I can't say enough about that department. I will rave them to the heavens that they put up with me and my calls about dogs. Because they get a lot of them.
How many, have you ever spoken with an animal control officer?
Oh, yeah.
How many, I mean, 10 times or less, or?
I don't want to be disparaging about anything, but my commissioner and I have had discussions.
Yeah.
In October, and I, they had a previous officer that worked. I don't remember his name, but I've been having discussions with animal control for years.
Okay.
You know, they've actually, I've allowed them to put traps on my yard, try to catch these dogs.
All right.
But like I said, it doesn't do me any good, 95. Today I got lucky, 1:30 he came to my yard, the stray dog that lives up the street. Now I'm gonna handle that. I'll handle that, if I can handle it on my own, I will.
Okay.
Okay? But I need, I just would love to see some enforcement of the ordinances that are in place. And that's the only reason I'm speaking today.
Okay.
And like I said, I can't, I can't say enough about Sheriff Carroll getting the attention very quickly from your administrator, and once I brought it to his attention. But I just don't know what to do, I'm frustrated, I've been dealing with this more than 10 years.
So where and from are these dogs live at?
I'm not exactly sure, but some of my neighbors do.
Okay.
And so tomorrow, I, when that Shepherd comes back to my yard, I will speak with the one neighbor that I am friends with down there, find out who it is, and I'll knock on their door and try to be polite. If they want to shoot me off the property, they may do that, but I will try.
If you give me that information, I'll transfer it to her.
There's more, there's more than one.
I know, I'm out there all the time.
I know. I know, but I mean, there's more than one person that lets their dog loose. Couple of them have been letting, keeping them home as pets during the day for their kids, and then they don't want to have to deal with it at night, taking them out, so they just let them run the neighborhood all night long, keeping everybody else awake, and everybody else's dog in the neighborhood is barking as well. But like I said, thank you, thank you again for the opportunity to speak.
Yes, ma'am.
Makes me feel better.
Thank you, Sandra.
Thank you. All right, and anyone else's public comment?
We don't have a public hand, do we?
No. Next meeting. Yeah, the next two are in February. All right. If no more public comments, we'll, can I get a motion to go into executive session on litigation, personnel, and real estate?
I'm making motion, we exit into executive session for litigation, real estate, and personnel.
Second. And personnel, I think Judge Jordan, was you wanting to enter into executive session?
I guess we need to have that.
And authorize, authorize magistrate Judge Jordan to come into executive session.
Okay. You got a motion back to Mr. Dorsey, second back to Mr. Brown. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, that's a 5-0 vote. Thank you all for being here.